Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is seven thirty P M on April ninth, two thousand and twenty five. Time for our first regular meeting of this month. At this time, Mr. Johnson will offer the invocation, and I will lead us in pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the colleagues and neighbors gathered here today, as well as those watching from home. Thank you for the many blessings you've given this city, and thank you for the opportunity to do good works in your name. And as we strive to do those good works, please give us the courage, empathy, and wisdom necessary to do so. Lastly, God, we ask that we always be reminded that it is your will and not our own which shall be done. In your name we pray, amen.
Join me.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Blair.
Here.
Call. Christman.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Yeah.
Lynch.
Here.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman. Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. We have the minutes from our last regular meeting on March twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five. Any questions about that? Okay, roll call. Are we on any motion?
Yeah.
Give me a motion.
I'll move that we accept these minutes as printed.
Second.
Thank you. Now, roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Okay, we have a public hearing on our ordinance, one five six point oh seven seven, on substitution. Anyone want to speak to that ordinance?
Uh, which one?
It's the one on substitution. Which is, Jim? Uh, on that last page, ordinance seven.
Uh, can you just briefly remind me of what that was about?
It's a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and probably, Jim, if you go to the minutes, and if we look at business session, uh, the paragraph that states, "Mr. Bryant stated that the proposal in front of the CPC Planning Commission would be a recommendation to be given to City Council to amend the zoning ordinance." He indicated that the current ordinance allows for the substitution of uses in all districts except R districts, which means residential. He also indicated that a boarding house provided meals and that a rooming house did not, and that there wasn't really any state law definition of a rooming house, but the proposed single residential occupancy, or SRO, definition would give some clarity on that and help the Board of Zoning Appeals substitute uses in the R district. Basically, you're letting a rooming house be a potential option, but they have to go through a fair amount of scrutiny with the Board of Zoning Appeals. That is not something you could just say today, "I want to be a rooming house opposed to residential."
Is it just rooming houses that potentially be able to be changed and substituted under the new language of, uh, of the relevant section?
Mark? That's my understanding.
Okay, well, I mean, from what I'm seeing, from the language that I see, Board of Zoning Appeals may allow the nonconforming use of a building or structure to be changed to another nonconforming use of the same or a more restricted use or classification, provided no structural alterations, except those required by law or ordinance are made, and no exterior additions are made, and must adhere to all other requirements within the zoning ordinance, so...
You could have, yes, uh, 'cause we gave Caleb the, uh, well, the Fayette Street Market example, that that was compelled to go back to residential when the structure itself didn't lend itself to that.
I think that's a little confusing. Is there a difference between a boarding house and a rooming house?
You can make an argument that one serves food and the other doesn't.
I mean, that's the only difference there is, I think.
So my worry would be if there's a neighborhood, um, let's say someone on Farmington Lane, uh, wanted to change the use of their residential home, is that something that the, the Board of Zoning Appeals may then allow to change? The nonconforming use of that home in an R one neighborhood?
That, I find it a little confusing.
Yeah, I don't want to accidentally...
I believe that you, you would have to make the application to the Board of Zoning Appeals, but they would have started out with a conforming use to begin with.
That's correct, and this, this just gives them a little bit broader authority to authorize substitution.
I mean, if you have...
If you look at the, now, if you look, there's two different languages here. There is the existing language in your ordinance, or on the access, on the, uh, the minutes of the, uh, Planning Commission. And then there's the post, which is in the, the ordinance. So no exterior additions are made, and must adhere to all other requirements within the zoning ordinance itself.
Thinking about it, in answer to the question, Caleb, you'd have to start with the nonconforming use in an R district. So if we're taking the example of a house on Farmington Lane, its use always conformed to the zoning, so you couldn't do that.
You couldn't do it.
Okay, so it, I guess, just to be certain, so, so you're saying that it wouldn't be possible for someone on Farmington Lane to convert their house into a bunch of these rooms? Because, uh, let's say they decide that they really like philanthropic efforts of, you know, providing housing, affordable housing to homeless persons. And so they've suddenly got twenty very small rooms in, in a house, in a home on Farmington Lane. Is that something that would be possible, this, that it could be an SRO facility?
No, um, for safety's sake, if you want to proceed with first reading and have Mr. Pitstick write you a memo on that question so that it is crystal clear beyond any stretch of the imagination or interpretation, I would say that would be a reasonable way to proceed with that, but we gotta have a nonconforming use to begin with, I believe.
Yes. It says, uh, "The use of a building or structure to be changed to another nonconforming use of the same or of a more restricted use or classification, provided no structural alterations, except those required by law or ordinance are made, and no exterior additions are made, and must adhere to all other requirements within the zoning code." You still have the requirements of, uh, how many people can be in the property. You still have the requirements of everything that would be in an R one code, if it was an R one zoning code. But it does, would allow under some circumstances for them to, to, to make a nonconforming use. But I'll be happy to, to give you something at the next reading if you want more detail.
'Cause I, my concern just comes from the single residential occupancy. SRO facility means a facility with more than five sleeping rooms. So, I mean, that sounds like more than one family living in a R one. So that would not be permissible.
No.
Unless it was a nonconforming use in the R one district to begin with.
Right. Which it would have to allow.
And most of those nonconforming uses stem from the fact that the use existed before you had zoning, so hence when you, you zoned it, uh, they did not, they really didn't address a lot of nonconforming uses, and those nonconforming uses are permitted to exist until that use is no longer actively exercised, in which case it reverts back to the zoning it was given. Example, Fayette Street Market. But currently, when Fayette Street Market ceased to operate as a market, it went back to residential, which the, the structure itself really doesn't lend itself to that.
But is there any SROs in Washington, are there a couple in Washington Courthouse?
Well, Cease Hacienda would be an excellent example, but that would have been, that would have predated zoning. That would have predated zoning.
And that's apparently goes back to an old zoning that allows that in that residential area.
No, there's not, no. That existed, you had that use there before you had zoning.
That's what I said, grandfather, yeah. His grandfather did, or else it wouldn't be there.
Correct.
It's an interesting argument that is. It's confusing.
I can tell you, having attended that meeting of the commission, that there was quite a discussion.
I bet there was, 'cause it is...
Uh, yeah, remember seeing, Mr. Miller expresses desire to amend the sitting, city zoning ordinance to grant the Board of Zoning Appeals the ability to substitute uses for nonconforming pressures in residentially zoned districts. So he owned an abandoned church, that's the nonconforming use as a church, and he wanted to use it as a rooming house.
Oh, that's their, yeah, Raleigh.
Rose, Rose Avenue.
Well, Mr. Miller is here, if you want him to explain to you his specific project.
Okay, please do.
State your name, man.
Hey, try to straighten us out, would you?
Hi, my name is Brian Miller. Um, address thirty seven forty nine Lot Road. The property that we're questioning right now is three one two Rose Avenue. It is a church building, but it is very, very big. Um, it has a lot of rooms. And since Washington Courthouse specifically has what we would call a housing crisis, um, I figured it would be a good idea to make it a very nice kitchen in there, bathrooms in there, and then rent out some of the rooms to people who just need to buy a housing. So, um, a lease from a three-month to nine-to-five-month lease, background checks included, everything checked off. And that's up to building code and building standard.
If I remember correctly, doesn't that have a nice basement in it?
It does, yes, sir.
Yeah, yes.
How many people in each room?
One, one for each room.
All right, so if you, if you're a homeless person who is, let's say, a single mother who has a child, they could not live there.
That's a great question. Um, that's a great question. So there's two rooms in the basement specifically, and also a room upstairs that has the size that could be a studio apartment based on your zoning code now. So that would be something that would be, it would be a base-to-base, to be honest with you. Um, I'm hesitant to say yes, because I wouldn't want a child in there with other people as well. I'm just seeing, uh, I'm, I'm hesitant to say yes or no.
And my question, my next question is, so instead of a single mother, now you have a married mother who has a child, and in fact, let's make it twins, to four people, could four people be in that room?
I love the hypo. I'm going to say no. I'm going to say no, just for safety reasons, and also we're dealing with two kids now, with other tenants in there as well. Now, the house does have a manager that would be there to make sure things go right, but, um, looking a little in the gray area, so...
Would it be correct in understanding that you, you said, I would say no for safety reasons? So that's not a legal restriction, it's you and your good word and good faith offering that limitation on yourself?
A hundred percent.
But that limitation wouldn't necessarily apply to every person who wanted this change?
So there is, that's a great question. There is actually, so every, the, the property has zoning restrictions, how many people can be in it, the, the, how big a room can be to classify as a room, how many people can be in that room. So with the change, it will still have to go through those qualifications, and ultimately zoning, and, and, I believe...
Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, to do this, you'd have to make application, go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, and Board of Zoning Appeals could, uh, provide any reasonable restrictions that it thought was a benefit to the community and the property.
Would you, would you serve meals there also?
No, sir.
Okay, no, sir. So if you, I'm sorry.
Do you know what you're getting into?
I love the prayer that you guys did earlier, so, um, I hope I'm just being a vessel for God's will and let it be from that. But obviously, there's always disruption, um, in good intention, so, a hundred percent.
Where that church is, is it in R one?
I don't know where.
It's residential, is that?
Residential.
I'm wondering if maybe limiting this from R ones might help us. R twos, I'm not as concerned, I mean, you know, changing the use of that building, I would be less concerned of.
This is a R two.
Okay, yeah. Could we put a limitation then on this for R ones, respect R one?
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to, you could amend it to say that you can do this in an R two and an R three, but not in R one.
Yeah, that would be what I would prefer after hearing all this. That would still allow you to do what you want to do.
Before we do that, can we verify it is an O one? It is an R two. I believe it is, but I have been looking at some property, but I saw it over more.
Question, I mean, it's not being done individually for Mr. Miller, uh, but he has brought the issue forward. Why don't you have Mark write his memo to you and also confirm the zoning of this property, that's the question.
Let me also say that this comes from, uh, the specific Board of Zoning Appeals, and how they want to have this changed, or the, or the Planning Commission, how they want to change. This is a recommendation directly from them, worded the way they want to be worded. So this will have to go, if you want to make that change, it'll have to go back to, to them, for them to make a decision on what they want to do here. We can't just automatically amend what they, what they have given us. It's not how it works. So we'll have to go back to the next meeting and ask them how they want to handle that from R, eliminating the R one.
They, again, I repeat, Mr. Miller could almost be a citizen of Washington Courthouse. He's been here, I don't know how many times. They went through this in great detail and great discussion. I feel very good about what they did, and...
And to answer your original question about, um, basically, could a single-family home try to do this? They couldn't, because it has to be a nonconforming home already. So for an example, the church qualifies, because it's in a residential district, and it was never a residential use. So unless another church was open up there, like that would be the only use, or a group home of that nature could do that. So it's very specific to buildings that just aren't residential, like they, they aren't built that way, um, so it's giving them the use that they're seeking.
Here's what happens.
Do churches have a different zoning?
Well, they do, but, but the issue is, if a building is vacant for more than two years,
Okay, I got you.
it automatically reverts.
Back to R one.
Or to, to what the surrounding zoning is. So that's the problem we have here, is with the church, uh, the zoning is, is residential. So it reveres back to residential because of the setting.
That makes sense, okay. So that is a little bit of a...
So this is a nonconforming building being used for anything else in, in, basically, and it's just allowing Board of Zoning Appeals to go in, and, and a nonconforming structure puts certain, puts certain restrictions on that structure, as you said, to how many people can be in a room, or what, what period of time it operates. All kinds of restrictions, that's the size and time and operation, they can do that, but that's the purpose of the substitution.
If you want to...
Would the folks being there, would they come and go, or would they live there permanently, or what?
They, they would be on a lease, so they will live there permanently. It would be a minimum three-month lease, and they go through a background check and things of that nature.
So it does come into under a rooming house, basically?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Uh, and that's what you're aiming for?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you. Does that clear up anything? Make it a rooming house. Good question. I hope we find an answer for it, like Dale, like Mr. Lynch said, he was at the meeting, and he feels very confident about what they said, and they...
It took more than one meeting.
Yeah.
How many times were you here? Two, three?
It started back in December, I think, was the first one.
Okay.
It was debated at length.
Okay.
Didn't we go through the same thing with the church open in Raleigh Street?
No, this isn't specific to his property. It's all nonconforming uses.
Yeah, right.
Anyplace like a church, or if you're a store that resides within a residential area, the store can't be used for anything else, so you'd have, you would have to go in and...
But once it sets empty for a certain amount of time, two years, then it goes back to the zoning of that particular neighborhood.
Exactly, there's no spot zoning. So we, we had all this, when the zoning person was enacted, you had spot zoning, you had things that was, were in residential areas that wouldn't necessarily be there. And after they closed, they were, if nothing happens in two years, it reverts back, the grandfather called, grandfather is gone.
And you do run into the practical problem that sometimes the structure just isn't designed and built for that, and it's hard to deal with.
So where do we leave Mr. Miller at?
It's just a public hearing, you got the legislation on your agenda.
Thank you for letting us know all that.
Yes, sir, thank you for questions.
Does anybody have anything else? If not, I will close the public hearing and move on. Any communication, Mr. Dutton?
None.
We have reports of our council committees, two of them, starting with economics, strategies, that would be Mr. Johnson. If you would like to read that report, sir?
The Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee met in the City Council chambers of one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, March twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five, at five thirty P M. I presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member, Mr. Ted Hawk, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mrs. Chelsea Baker, economic development director, Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief, Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney, and Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee reviewed progress with industrial development. The committee noted that there were forty-three open projects. Number two, Mrs. Baker updated the committee on a recent site visit at the industrial park. Three, the committee noted the status of various business development projects within the downtown area. Number four, the committee noted that vinyl coffee's projected opening date at the new location will be June first, two thousand and twenty five. Number five, Mrs. Baker advised the committee of the upcoming Easter egg hunt and sip-and-thrift events brought on by the Main Street Committee. Number six, committee noted Route twenty-two projected business opening would be held on Memorial Day weekend. Number seven, the administration advised the committee that a local building owner had been approved for the downtown living grant. Committee noted that this was a matching grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars per unit, not to exceed two units. Number eight, the administration advised committee that work continued in small nation. Number nine, the administration advised the committee that discussions continued regarding mural artwork for downtown areas. The committee noted that the Lynch screen printing would work as a catalyst to promote future further artwork. Number ten, Mrs. Baker noted an upcoming business project by Mr. Pennwell's class. Number eleven, the committee benefited from a report of commercial development. Number twelve, the committee noted the potential groundbreaking of Love's Truck Stop would be in two thousand and twenty six. The committee noted that the truck stop would be located at State Route thirty-five and State Route seven fifty-three. Number thirteen, the committee noted the new professional workshop. Mrs. Baker noted that the workshop's goal was to target new professionals of all ages. Number fourteen, Mrs. Baker noted an upcoming housing workshop that would be hosted by the local Chamber of Commerce building held at the OSU Extension Office with local realtors and local developers. Number fifteen, Mrs. Baker noted that she will be a panelist for the Ohio Arts Council Review Process. Respectfully submitted, myself and Mrs. Kelly, Board Recording Secretary.
Good job, Caleb.
You did good. I used to get in that, whatever color that is, pink, I guess.
Uh, any comments? Again, I want to mention number ten, Mrs. Baker noted Mr. Pennwell's class projects, where they come up with ideas for businesses they'd like to see. It's very interesting to hear what the students come up with, but it's on April seventeenth. First period is seven thirty to eight fifteen. Yes, they start that early. And then one fifteen to two, those are the two classes. And they really love it when city council people and Mrs. Baker and all those people come and listen to their ideas. So if you're available, they'd love to have you. The only other thing I would mention, I was at the committee meeting the other night, when the guy from Love's Truck Stop was there. He did, he mentioned that there would be some sort of food service there, and I told him, "Just don't put in a White Castle."
'Cause you'll never get rid of Ted.
Ted, I did not say that, I'm lying, but anyway.
I didn't say that. He wrote him a note with it on it.
Any other comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I will say, uh, yes, I will make a motion to approve it, it's read, except for the White Castle part.
I'll second.
Okay, Ed, roll call.
Blair.
abstain.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Well, after what we said, I should abstain, but, yeah, I'll be okay.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Uh, the other is finance and personnel, Mr. Christman.
Thank you. The Finance and Personnel Committee met in the City Council chambers of one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, at six thirty P M. I presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member, Mr. Ted Hawk, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief, Mr. Ron Sockman, finance director, Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney, and Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee benefited from a report on the statement of cash for the month ending February, two thousand and twenty-five. Number two, the committee benefited from a report on investments of the City of Washington Courthouse. Three, the committee noted that the administration had been chosen for a random pension audit. Mr. Sockman noted a positive audit. Number four, the administration benefited from a review of personnel issues. The committee noted that the interview process had been completed for the assistant fire chief position, and that the score would be certified by civil service. Number five, the administration noted that contract negotiations for the police department continued. Number six, excuse me, the administration noted that interviews had begun for the open position at the income tax department. Number seven, the administration noted that applications were being taken for an open lab technician position at the wastewater treatment plant. Number eight, the administration noted an open position at the street department. Number nine, the administration presented a concept drawing for a proposed parking area to be utilized for the Blue Line Athletic Practice Fields by Community Drive. The committee recommended that the administration proceed with planning discussions, respectfully submitted by me as chairperson of Finance and Personnel, Mrs. Kelly, Board Recording Secretary.
Thank you, Jim. Discussion? Okay, roll call. I know we made a, I keep forgetting the...
I'll, I'll move that we accept these as read.
I'll second it. While that was seconded, I'll... He's seconding his own reading. Well, nobody else had anything against me, so I, I take care of myself.
Now, roll call.
Blair.
abstain.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Okay, reports of city officials, Mr. Denon, you're up.
Well, thank you. Would like to really, you know, express some compassion for the folks at Millen Rain and the the weather that was, you know, an awful result out there. Gary talked to you earlier in the evening about how, uh, you know, we really think about aggressively looking at proper tree care of street trees, that we reduce some of the issues that we would normally encounter in that type of weather. Tim talked to you about the importance of the outdoor warning system, and what great strides we have made there, and that we will be replacing the ancient siren, uh, in the courthouse, because it has finally ceased to operate after many, many years. And that's, again, the overlap we have now with the rest of the siren system, you could call it redundant, but that's just a little bit of extra precaution there. Merritt Way subdivision, they probably haven't started that, it's probably still too wet out there. But that'll start to move along, uh, and that will be interesting to see. D R Horton, that'll be the first really homes that they built here, so that'll be interesting to see how that looks. Uh, I'm pleased to thank the county commissioners on their recent action with the A G M Hospital Project, specifically to appreciate the opportunity to talk with the commissioners concerning the matter, and would like to stress that everybody can have different opinions about a hospital system. Uh, the action of the commissioners is completely reasonable, and I would be happy to tell anybody that effect. Would like to note, she was not a council member, but she was very involved by the community. Mary Reddick expressed condolences to the Davis family. Uh, she, very lovely person who had a very active role in the community for many years. Practical matters, grass, you need to mow. And it would be nice if you did throw it out in the street. Grass in the street, it's a safety issue. Somebody on motorcycle, bicycle, that way grass can be incredibly slick, even in automobile, but less so. Uh, but it's a safety issue, it doesn't look very nice, and ends up clogging up the catch basin, and all that organic matter, you go down the storm drain, that ends up in Pink Creek. So it's arguably also, uh, an environmental issue, and that is something that's just easier if you don't throw it out in the street, and that would be helpful. Ball diamonds, please don't be inconsiderate and play on them when they are wet, and do anything like have a tournament that you didn't talk to anybody about. Uh, cause that gets us really wound up, and there's quite a bit of damage that we suffered down there, and fair amount of work that we have to address down there. I would really like to thank the the softball association over the years, they've been a wonderful partner down there, and that is something that we will address and move forward and, uh, make it better than it was. Now, over the years, occasionally, you have softball fields, so you have all differences of opinion, a little bit complicated occasionally. But that is something that we can manage to deal with and make some progress on, and I'm very happy to work with softball association. Would like to thank the Jeffersonville Township trustees for their continued work to address practical issues and work with other local governments in the the county. It's always a pleasure, we've been making quite a bit of progress with some matters out there that are benefit to everybody. Hydrant flushing, uh, Gary talked about that earlier in the committee. That is something that we're about halfway through. Occasionally, that can result in a little bit of rust-colored water for residents, there's no safety issue there. However, if they have any concerns, we should be happy to have somebody from the water company, uh, water department, stop out and visit them and take a sample and just reassure them. Sponsor POC, I think you put that information in your box. It is that time of year where, uh, you generously come together and help support the sponsor POC program downtown, and that is something that has been, uh, oh, considerable benefit to the community, it's something that we do with master gardeners, and it's been a lot of fun over the year. New legislation, you have an ordinance number four, twenty twenty-five. That increases the fees for door-to-door sales. I don't know in the entire time that we've had, uh, a legislation about door-to-door sales that we've ever changed the fee there. It is a bit of a jump, uh, but also you get more aggressive marketing than you have in the past, and hopefully that gets people to think about it a bit. An ordinance establishing vacant and or abandoned buildings, uh, registration system. That one, we recently had some additional discussion about, and it would be helpful if you tabled that. And, uh, what we'll do is we'll put together an amendment and have the, uh, by county task force, Mr. Blair, take a look at it and see if there's some additional changes that we want to make there to make that work a little bit easier. Ordinance number six, twenty twenty-four, uh, that allows projecting signage downtown. That is signage that is not flat on the building, which is something that we're very supportive of, it gives people more options. What would be nice, if you amended that and simply said, Joe, we'd like you to also allow signage that is illuminated by the the interior of the sign. In other words, it's a sign with a light bulb in it, uh, that that is something that they can do down there. Cause with a bit of review, that is perfectly reasonable, perfectly fine. And then we get to, uh, the substitution ordinance that we talked about, whether it's- And that's the whole show for tonight.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Denon? Uh, then, Mr. Sockman, do you have anything this evening? And Mr. Pitstick, do you have anything this evening?
All I will say is, I'm going to reiterate, mowing your grass. Okay? Starting next week, we're going to be putting placards up. So, you know, I know I'm not like everybody else, I've already mowed my yard twice. So, uh, but next week, I I think it's going to be a nice week, so we'd like to see everybody start mowing their yards. That's all I have.
I have a question for you, Mr. Law Director. The special election coming up in May, what is that costing the city?
We don't know. We don't know yet. Because there there could possibly be another issue about. And until they know, uh, whether that issue's going to come up, they can't tell us how much it was going to be.
So if there's two issues, it'd be split fifty-fifty?
Split fifty-fifty. Now, it might be less than fifty-fifty, depending upon how wide the issue is. I mean, ours is only citywide, if it's a county-wide issue, then it might be less than that, I can't tell you for sure.
The other issue is potentially the school is on it?
I don't know. I don't know for sure.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But it's in August, not May.
It is in August. August.
August.
August.
I know, but yeah, Jim said May, and it's August.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean May, it's in August.
Okay.
This is August.
Okay. Local residents and taxpayers, we didn't have anyone sign up. So we'll move to legislation. And, uh, the first one is ordinance number three, twenty twenty-five. We do not have to do that unless we want to take it off the table, which, as we've already been told, we shouldn't do. So we'll move on to resolution number R seventeen, twenty twenty-five, second reading.
I'll move we put resolution R seventeen, twenty twenty-five on second reading.
Second.
Thank you, uh, discussion. Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R seventeen dash two thousand and twenty-five. Resolution authorizing the city manager, Joseph J. Denon, of the City of Washington courthouse to award a contract to Cox Paving LLC for the two thousand twenty-five street and alley paving program.
Move for adoption.
Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Next, we have our new legislation, starting with ordinance number four, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I move we place ordinance number four, twenty twenty-five, on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. If somebody does apply and get the permission to do the sales, how are they identified? If they knock on my door, how can I tell they're officially from the city, been approved?
I think that when we issue a permit, uh, that they are supposed to carry a copy of the permit with them, and you could ask to look at it.
They don't wear a lanyard or anything, would that be a possibility of more visibility if they had a lanyard around their neck?
If you, yeah, we can come up with some additional requirements to that effect. Yeah, we can do that.
I think it'd be helpful, thank you very much.
True, Jim, I don't think most people would know to ask if you have.
No, I must, I truly, if they knock on my door.
Most people answer, get off my front porch.
But they invariably tell me that they have a permit. I don't remember doing that.
Get off my front porch, oh, by the way, do you have a permit?
Okay, any other discussion on ordinance number four? Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz. Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number four dash two thousand and twenty-five, and ordinance amending codified ordinance one one four point zero four, license fees in term for the purpose of door-to-door sales and solicitation.
Next is ordinance number five, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll make a motion that we table it.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Did we have a motion and second to read it?
No.
You gotta do that first, then table.
Okay, good.
Does someone want to make a motion to, for the first reading of ordinance number five, twenty twenty-five?
Alright, I'll make a motion that ordinance five, twenty twenty-five, put on first reading.
Second.
There we go.
And before we table it, I want to make a motion to amend the title, because I think it's supposed to say, an ordinance regulating vacant and or abandoned buildings, we're not establishing a vacant or an abandoned building with this.
Caleb, we're gonna put together an amendment that changes a couple other things, so if you would like us to add that to the list, then we'll do it all in one sweep.
That'll be fine then.
Yeah.
Okay, back to what we're doing, Steve and Ted have made a motion. Do we need to, that, or is this when the table?
I move to table the motion. Or table the the ordinance, yes, yeah.
Okay, we're switching, since we're out of order. We went out of order. Does someone want to second the motion to table?
Second.
Thank you. Now, the roll call is for tabling. Go ahead.
Could I?
Yes.
Just just to give a little more information on why we're tabling this.
Go ahead.
In the vitality meeting yesterday, uh, there was some suggestions brought forward to enhance it, uh, give us more, uh, flexibility, improvements, uh, Joe, and so the reason I, we discussed is, so Joe and Mark can have time to incorporate those changes into the ordinance, I think it'd be a huge, huge improvement.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Do we normally not have discussion on something that's tabled?
I don't know.
It hasn't been tabled yet, and we haven't voted on it.
I'm so screwed up here, I have no idea. But I'm glad you explained what we, what, so, anyway, we're voting to table at this point. Go ahead, Denon.
Blair.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. I'm sorry about that mess up. We're ready for ordinance number six, twenty twenty-four, first reading.
I move we place ordinance number six, twenty twenty-four, on first reading.
Second.
Uh, I believe it's twenty twenty-five, actually.
Yes, it would be. I'm sorry, I'm just reading.
So I amend my-
No, you were right, it's printed twenty twenty-four.
I move we place ordinance number six, twenty twenty-five, on first reading.
Second.
But, here again, Mark, help me out.
Yeah.
If we want to amend this, as was asked by the city manager, to add, uh, I guess illuminated signs by the interior of the sign.
We can go ahead and put this on first reading.
Okay.
Then we'll go back and make the changes, and we'll amend it next week.
Okay.
It'd be an amended-
Yes.
Ordinance.
Yes.
But not, we're okay on the first reading?
Yeah.
Okay, so Ted made a motion, Caleb seconded, I believe. Or Jim did, okay, I'm sorry. Boy, not my best night, okay, roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number six dash two thousand and twenty-five, and ordinance amending ordinance number six dash ninety-three, downtown design review standard and design criteria.
Ordinance number seven, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I move we put ordinance number seven, twenty twenty-five, on first reading.
Second.
Discussion?
I move to table it until the, uh, yeah, questions can be addressed. Mark needs to be able to address those questions, I believe.
I will say this, that I, one of the issues that we have, is any time a planning commission makes a recommendation to council, it takes three quarters of council to vote no on their recommendation to send it back to them for reconsideration. Okay? So I can sit there, I'll be happy, I'll be happy to give you a memorandum on how this works, no problem. But I want everyone to know that you either voted up or you voted down, and then it has to go back to planning commission for reconsideration. So, I'll I'll be happy to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we do that, this is only the first reading.
This is the first reading.
So we can either vote yes on the way it is tonight.
Well, we got a motion, I haven't made a second yet, to ta, to table it.
Are we gonna table this?
That's up to you guys.
I'll second that.
Okay, Jim's seconding, so we have a tape, motion to table. So we're going to vote on the motion to table. And obviously, if you vote yes, you're voting to table it. Caleb, can you give us a roll call?
Yes, sir. Blair.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
No.
And I'd agree with this as well. Let me read that one.
Okay. So we tabled. Mr. Blair, or Mr. Blair, Mr. Pitstick, will you write up a memorandum?
Sure.
I would appreciate that. We are too miscellaneous, I think. Mr. Crispin, do you have anything this evening?
Me? I was supposed to last time.
You were?
Yeah, I do, I get an honor for that.
Well, I already said I've screwed up so many things tonight, I'll screw this up again.
I helped you, I helped you too. I'd like to thank everybody for coming, appreciate it. Ask all your friends and friends, your relatives to come visit us. It's very enlightening, as the gentleman Eric can tell you after sixteen years. Anyway, thank you all for coming, good evening.
Mr. Hawk?
I don't have anything bad.
Mr. Schultz?
Well, as we've seen tonight, uh, politics is the art of looking for trouble and finding it everywhere, and trying to diagnose- it everywhere, and trying to diagnose it incorrectly, and making the wrong decisions sometimes, so that's the definition of politics. That's all I got, thank you.
Mr. Blair?
Well, since we would not be here until after Easter, I want to wish our community a blessed Easter, and, uh, thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Mr. Johnson?
Um, yeah, I want to thank everyone for coming, but I would like to especially thank Mr. Miller for coming to explain all the things, you did a great job. I think what you want, I'm in support of, I have to be, I have to be careful, because the, the two sitting behind you, see, they come to every single city council meeting, and, and they have, uh, they have had previously an issue with zoning in their neighborhood, and, uh, unless we want the entire neighborhood here yelling at us like we had one night, I, I think just moving carefully and making sure that we're making the right decision to protect everyone and allow you to do what you want to do would be best. So that's why we're tabling it, in my opinion, is because we're, we're looking to get those answers to make sure that we're doing the right thing. So, thank you.
In my opinion, the planning commission did all that. We're just spinning our wheels, and you're going to have to come back again, I'm sure. And that's totally different than the Farmington Lane situation. Anyway, that being said, does someone want to make a motion to?
I'll, I'll make a motion, Richard.
Someone want to make?
I'll second that.
Well, thank you.
I thought Ted spoke up.
Uh, roll call.
Blair.[1789.68]